Mr. Crack, we can start with roll call.
Ms. Berkeley.
Present.
Mr. Carmenito.
Present.
Ms. Dugan. Mr. Kurtner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Strunfeld. Mr. Weiss.
Present.
Mr. Feewell.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Manager Assistant Lieutenant Solicitor, here you have a court.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Dugan, Mr. Strunfeld are excused absent tonight. They apologize they were not able to make tonight's meeting. With that, we will open up our first round of public comment. Those joining us on Zoom, if you want to raise your hand digitally, a member of our staff will unmute you. Any members of our public wishing to make public comment tonight, in the room tonight, if you want to make your way up to the podium, there is a sign in sheet and we just ask that you provide your name and address and whether you're a borough taxpayer, sorry, resident or business.
My name is Nicholas Tutterella. I moved into the township in December. And I live in Hankin Manor, which is on 115 Buchanan Street. It's a senior housing building. And I wanted to bring to your attention that we have a very dangerous situation over there, which is we only have thirty two parking spots for fifty people who live in the building. Most of the people in that building are disabled. They use wheelchairs and walkers and canes to get around. There is a public lot, as you know, across one thirteen. I guess it's Nudie's parking lot, but they like the public park there. But most of the people in that building cannot manage to get across one thirteen because of their disabilities. Now Hank and Ma- um Harbin is the name of the company that owns the building. The building has section eight housing. It also has um other forms of, of, of what I would call poor housing. So most of the people there don't have much income. They can't afford to like get a parking space or things like that. But I wanted to bring to your attention because it's really dangerous for some of these people to try to get across one thirteen. And we need to come up with a solution to have more parking spots. Now, the fifty people who live in the building for the thirty two spots also may have friends or relatives who come visit them. And that just makes the parking much, much worse. There are plenty of times when people come in at six or seven o'clock at night and there's no parking spots for them. So that's basically my concern is the safety issue for these people who are handicapped. I'm lucky I can still walk, so I'm okay. But it's the people in the building that I'm really concerned about because some of them are severely handicapped.
Thank you. Any questions from?
Good evening, members of council. David Sanic, Fillmore Street. I'm writing, I'm right, I'm here to read an email that I sent to my two councilmen, Mr. Kurtner and Mr. Strunfeld, and one to the Borough Manager. And this is concerning item eleven H motion authorizations submission Chester County program plan for Fillmore Street realignment. I've attended most of those meetings, at least I've tried to. And I was told that this was kind of straightening out things on South Street. When I finally got to see the plan yesterday, it affects me quite a bit on Fillmore Street. And there's some material defects in the plan. One, they had the right of way wrong on Crombie Road. And they spell Crombie Road wrong. It's C R O M B Y and they spelled it C R U M B Y. But, and there's other things that they are, have on there which are not correct. And this is the email I wrote. I wrote to Councilman Richard Kurtner, David Strunfeld, Borough Manager E Jean Crack. With respect to proposed Fillmore Street realignment, I have concerns regarding the right of way width of Crombie Road and Fillmore Street as they are incorrectly marked on the plan. Crombie Road is also misspelled. Also, the proposed sidewalk, is it within the Fillmore Street right of way? Why does it not continue on to Renaissance Academy as well? Also, why is the informal alleyway parallel to Franklin Avenue mentioned at twenty two and a half feet? Now, that's a good one because I've been trying to find out what that alleyway is. And no, I'm told it's an informal alleyway, yet there's no references to where these right of ways come from. Also, they want to relocate a fire hydrant. And I think they're using the wrong right of way there. So I'm asking Borough Council to pause on item H until some of these issues are clarified. And one thing with that sidewalk issue, they're, they're wanting to put in a sidewalk on my property. It was supposed to, my understanding, it was supposed to go down to on Renaissance. And I see it's going on mine, but it's not going to Renaissance. And I have some questions on that, like what is the planning and thinking behind that? So those are my concerns. I, I think this needs a little bit more review. I did stop down yesterday and one thing that I would need to be clarified, I asked the borough personnel who were there. I said, how do I get a copy of this plan? Which was drawn by the borough engineer? Or, and they said, well, and they said, well, you have to ask the engineer for that because it's theirs and we only have a copy and they can give it to you or not give it to you. And so I went over, I've asked the borough engineer. And he said, well, I can't tell you that because I got to speak with Mr. Crack first. You know, you kind of get one answer. We're starting to another answer. So I think there's some issues here which need to be clarified. The fire hydrant's another issue because that, that concerns how the property is deeded. There's actually quite a bit of history to that area. So those are my concerns on asking that you might look at this a little closer before submitting it. And that's my request and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions, I would answer, try to answer them. All right, bye bye.
Okay, so any, any other members joining us on the Zoom platform? If you want to raise your hand digitally. None, any members in the public here tonight?
Good evening. Michael Kajak, parcel ID number one five dash eight dash nine one dot one is referenced by Brian Weiss on October eleventh of two thousand and twenty two for the eminent domain of thirty feet of my property at four twenty five Bridge Street. But I'll reintroduce myself as my actual parcel ID number is one five dash nine dash nine one dot one as it was referenced in the eminent domain action that then transpired thereafter. It's been two and a half years since the Borough of Phoenixville took forcible condemnation of my property. Dating forward to from February of two thousand and twenty three, the Borough then agreed to only taking fifteen feet of my property and to have a board of view put evaluation of my property then therefore. The Borough took roughly fifty seven hundred square feet for twenty two thousand dollars. Judge Forzato at Chester County in May of two thousand and twenty four found that the Borough had no legal right of way after they appealed the condemnation on July fifth of two thousand and twenty three, which forced a new trial. And Judge Forzato then found that the Borough had no legal right of way through my property as they referenced in their appeal process. So the Borough took almost fifty seven hundred square feet for twenty two thousand dollars, whereas their valuation was not a condemnation type valuation where you do a partial taking. When a partial taking is performed, you do a before and after valuation. And then the individual as the condemnee is then owed what is the difference of the valuation. William Yetkey performed an appraisal in August of two thousand and twenty two with that twenty two thousand dollar valuation for fifteen feet right of way of my property. But it's been determined there was no right of way. William Yetkey then found a valuation of two hundred and fifteen thousand in January of two thousand and twenty five, which then was met with a board of viewers in January two thousand and twenty two, or January twenty second of two thousand and twenty five, where the board of viewers found a valuation of four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars was owed to me. I still have not received a check. I still have been led to believe that the Borough is appealing this view of board of viewers, which is due on the February of, give me February or March twenty sixth of this month. I'm asking that the council please review your directions as given to you and please consider them appropriately. Thank you.
Any other members in chambers tonight? Seeing no members on Zoom, we'll close the first round of public participation. With that, we'll go into presentations. I'd like to invite Chief Presunus to the podium. We have the official swearing in of three full time firefighters tonight. Chief Presunus will be providing a brief background followed by the formal swearing in.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Aiman Presunus, Chief of the Phoenix Hall Fire Department. Before we bring up each of our three new firefighters, I just acknowledge the support of Borough Council as well as the support of my colleagues on staff as well as the community at the end of the day. We've made tremendous progress with the department, with our staff, working hand in hand with our dedicated volunteers. And we can't make this progress without everybody working as a team. So it's a pleasure to work here and to be here to celebrate this momentous occasion for three gentlemen joining our department officially this evening. So first we'll start with Ian McCormick. As for each of the three gentlemen coming up, I'll just do a quick little bio and we'll have each of them come up individually. And then we invite a family member or the family to come up and stand as they are sworn in. Ian McCormick's going to come up and Deputy Chief David J Meadows will be holding the Constitution for him. Ian McCormick rejoins the department after working full time most recently for DC Fire and EMS. Ian has strong ties with the Phoenixville community, having grown up in the borough and later graduating from Phoenixville Area High School. Ian brings with him a wealth of fire rescue and EMS experience as a volunteer and career first responder. Ian is our lead firefighter on C shift. Welcome aboard, Ian.
Wait, my face.
You can stand over there. Stand on his right side. You want to raise your right hand?
Raise my right hand.
Yeah, so you want to go on that side. You're the first one, so.
So I'm on that side.
We had to mess up something.
Okay.
Now we're good. Raise your right hand. You're going to repeat, repeat after me. So I.
I, Ian McCormick.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the Borough of Phoenixville.
And the Borough of Phoenixville.
I will with fidelity.
I will with fidelity.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter.
Of the office of firefighter.
With the Borough of Phoenixville.
With the Borough of Phoenixville.
Fire Department.
Fire Department.
Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania.
Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania.
And that I will uphold, obey and enforce.
And that I will uphold, obey and enforce.
The law without consideration.
The law without consideration.
Of a person's race, color, sex, religious creed.
Of a person's race, color, sex, religious creed.
Sexual orientation, age.
Sexual orientation, age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry, handicap or disability.
Ancestry, handicap or disability.
Very nice. Welcome aboard.
Do you want to do a quick round of horns?
Jack Nudie, if you can make your way up. Jack Nudie joins the department after being a living member at Goodwill Fire Company Number Two in West Chester. Jack is finishing his undergraduate degree at West Chester University. Jack started his career in the fire service with the Berwin Fire Company as a volunteer, where his grandfather, father and sister have also volunteered for many years. Jack has partnered with Ron Schleck on A shift. Welcome aboard, Jack.
You're going to raise your right hand. Break in ears. Did I state your name? So I.
I, Jack Nudie.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Thou support, obey and defend.
Thou support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And of the Borough of Phoenixville.
And of the Borough of Phoenixville.
I will with fidelity.
I will with fidelity.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter.
Of the office of firefighter.
With the Borough of Phoenixville Fire Department.
With the Borough of Phoenixville Fire Department.
Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania.
Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania.
I will uphold, obey and enforce.
I will uphold, obey and enforce.
The law without consideration.
The law without consideration.
Of a person's race.
Of a person's race.
Color, sex, religious creed.
Color, sex or religious creed.
Sexual orientation or age.
Sexual orientation or age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry, handicap or disability.
Ancestry, handicap or disability.
Welcome aboard.
Tanner, make your way up. Tanner Kubba joins the department after working full time most recently with Mayland Health Riddle EMS. Tanner has several years of volunteer experience with East Brandon White Fire Company and has worked at other fire service agencies in Chester County. Tanner is also employed part time at the Goshen Fire Company. Tanner is partner with Chris Valerio on B shift. Welcome aboard, Tanner.
Get the document. I'm not sure what your preference is. They'll hold it for you. You're going to stand right here. They're going to stand to, so you can raise your right hand. I.
I, Tanner Kubba.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey and defend.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, defend, obey and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the laws of Borough of Phoenixville.
And the laws of the Borough of the Phoenixville.
I will with fidelity.
I will with fidelity.
Discharge the duties of the office of firefighter.
Discharge the duties of firefighter.
With the Borough of Phoenixville Fire Department.
With the Borough of Phoenixville Fire Department.
Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania.
Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania.
I will uphold, obey and enforce.
I will uphold, obey and enforce.
The law without consideration.
The law without consideration.
Of a person's race, color, sex.
With, with that, the person's race, color or sex.
Religious creed, sexual orientation, age.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation or creed.
Rage.
Rage.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Tanner, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We'll just take a quick moment so everybody can make their way out for formal photographs and enjoyment. Okay, with that, we'll resume tonight's meeting. We have one note that prior to tonight's meeting, we held an executive session to discuss the following items. Number one was a matter of real estate relating to Chester County UPI numbers fifteen dash seven dash seventeen dash, sorry, dot one B, as well as parcel number, number fifteen dash eight dash sixteen point five. The second item was a matter of real estate litigation related to four twenty five Bridge Street. And the third item in executive session was a matter of personnel related to the hiring of two new patrol officers. So that was immediately prior to tonight's meeting. With that, we'll move on to section five of tonight's agenda with our, our consent agenda. Are there any items on tonight's consent agenda that any member of council would wish to have removed for later discussion or deliberation?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda for this evening's meeting.
Second.
Much my Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Carmenito. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Next up on tonight's agenda is communications council participation. So any updates from council on any items or any correspondence? Seeing none? There'll be something, there'll be another one at the end. With that, we'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for those of you who are joining us here in person and those who are joining us virtually via Zoom. Special congratulations to all of our newly sworn in firefighters. And thank you certainly to our firefighters and all of our first responders that we have here in the Phoenixville community. A couple of things to note, we want to thank and congratulate the Phoenixville Community Education Foundation. Last week, they held a very successful phantom fundraiser, which helps to raise money to offset some of the costs associated with our school districts, special programs that don't then necessarily cost our tax base. And so thank you so much to the Community Education Foundation and congratulations. Upcoming, we have on the thirteenth of this month, a C, at the Senior Center, an Irish wake. It is a lot of fun and I would highly encourage you, if you haven't done so, please check out the Phoenixville Area Senior Center website. Lots of great resources for seniors and really anybody in our community who works closely with senior citizens or active adults. Also, on the fifteenth, we want to wish Molly Maguires and all of our restaurants downtown. I know many of them will be celebrating St. Patrick's Day. So we wish them a very safe and happy day on the fifteenth. Of course, the seventeenth being the actual St. Patrick's Day. On the nineteenth, the Phoenixville Regional Chamber of Commerce will be celebrating their annual awards gala. If you want to check that out, visit the Phoenixville Regional Chamber of Commerce website to find out more information. On April second will be the inaugural event for one hundred men of Phoenixville. This innovative program actually copies the one hundred women of Phoenixville. And essentially what it is, is each gentleman who attends will donate a hundred dollars and their goal is to give away ten thousand dollars at that meeting to one of three charities. On April third, the Phoenixville Public Library will be hosting their annual spelling bee, adult, adult spelling bee, I should clarify. If you are interested in participating or learning more, visit the library's website for more information. On April fifth, Barnstone Live, which provides art based therapy for children who have trauma. And they are having their Barnstone Live event, which is an incredible auction and that's right here in Phoenixville. Check out Barnstone Live to find out more. And then finally, the Social Concerns Committee will be having their annual Martin Luther King prayer breakfast on the sixth of April. And with that, thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you all for being here with us today.
Thank you, Mayor. So each month we do call for residents to volunteer to join any number of boards and committees and commissions. It takes roughly somewhere between eighty and a hundred volunteers in the community to fill each of our boards and committees. And we are in the rare moment where we might actually have a full slate after the next meeting or two. In tonight's consent agenda, we did reappoint Ms. Catherine Bianco as our planning commission role. So if anybody is looking to take part in any of our boards and committees, just reach out to your committee, your council person and they'll walk you through the painless process. We'll move on to new business. There are four items up for consideration on tonight's agenda. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we schedule, reschedule the finance and policy committee meetings on the fourth Tuesday of each month, with finance starting at six o'clock PM, followed immediately by the policy committee and further authorize the advertisement of the foregoing.
Second.
Much my Mr. Kurtner, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on this item? I appreciate, Mr. Moore, go ahead.
I think Mr. Kurtner said the fourth, but I'm reading it, we want to move it to the third.
So that was fixed on the resolution that will be signed? So the agenda is?
The agenda is out, okay.
Yeah, so it's the.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so if, yeah. The printed agenda had the listed as the fourth as well.
Okay.
So I appreciate staff and committees considering this. It does seem like it should add some expediency to those two meetings when one sometimes goes far shorter than the other. So any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B, what is council's pleasure for the ratifying the request for an involvement letter?
I'll make a motion approving and ratifying the insurance of a request for involvement letter and any follow up by the Borough in response to Act Two, environmental cleanup of a hundred school lane and forty one second avenue and any further action by the Borough President, Borough Manager and Borough Solicitor deemed advisable thereby to protect the interest of the Borough.
Second.
Much my Ms. Berkeley, same by Mr. Weiss.
I can give some background on that, so. Shortly after last month's meeting, we received the notice of intent to remediate letter from Tolmit Atlantic identifying its intent to engage in Act Two cleanup on one hundred school lane and forty one school, forty one second avenue. The Pennsylvania Land Recycling and Environmental Standards Act, known as Act Two, provides a municipality with thirty days to express interest in being involved in a voluntary cleanup within its boundaries. If a municipality decides to be involved, it triggers that the applicant provides certain information to the municipality and to the public. We are not required to have any specific involvement once we request to be involved. And I'm not guaranteeing that we even will. But it activates that requirement that the applicant provide additional information to the public and it gives us a seat at the table. So if we see something that we're not thrilled with, we can. we're not thrilled with, we can add our thoughts to it. However, based on the timing of the letter, the letter was dated shortly before our last meeting, even though we received it shortly after our last meeting. So our thirty days actually would have expired the end of business today. So while it's not typically how we do things, in order to not miss our deadline, at my recommendation, we sent a letter requesting our involvement and tonight we're asking council to ratify that action.
Appreciate the background. Any questions for this listener? Mr. Moore.
To enact to cleanup, who else supervises? Besides, we, so we get to ask questions for the public, for our citizens, but how else is it supervised by the state?
The Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection is the overseeing body. It reviews the cleanup plan. It will approve the ultimate cleanup plan. And then it inspects the cleanup to ensure that it was done properly.
Are there, are there records of how the, the project is proceeding? Something that is made public?
It will be, yes. So the notice of intent to remediate is really just that. It's a notice. It doesn't include a whole lot of information. There will be a cleanup plan that is issued by Toll, but it hasn't been issued yet. We haven't seen it. And that's part of why I suggested we want to be involved so that when those things are issued, that we are required to receive a copy.
Is the planning commission included in that loop or not?
No.
Because the project is in front of the planning commission at this point.
Correct, but that's under the regulations of the SALDO only. That, that's the only thing within their jurisdiction. The environmental aspect does not fall under the MPC.
Second.
Any other questions on the item at hand? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Next up, we have a motion to authorize conditional offer of employment to two patrol officers. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to authorize a conditional offer of employment to Michael Raspawski and Joanne, Jo Angelie Thomas Estrada for patrol officer.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. And lastly, under new business, we have the consideration for tree and stump removal contract for 2025.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommendation to award the 2025 tree and stump removal contract to Yellowstone Landscape of Philadelphia, PA as the lowest responsible bidder.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the stump and tree removal contract? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. With that, we'll need a motion to recess into a public hearing, I believe.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, we are now in a public hearing and this hearing is on an ordinance to amend section twenty-two dash six hundred traffic impact statements of the borough subdivision and land development ordinance. This ordinance is this ordinance amendment was made in part in response to comments from our recent amendment to the impact statements in the subdivision and land development ordinance made by council at the time of that adoption. And this amendment clarifies certain things and in particular, making sure that we're clearly identifying that multimodal transportation, non-vehicular transportation is a part of the analysis of traffic impact studies when they're required to be submitted as a part of the land development process. This ordinance was advertised in the Pottstown Mercury on February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five and March third, twenty twenty-five. Copies of the proposed ordinance amendment were sent to the Chester County Law Library and the Pottstown Mercury on February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five for public inspection. I'll introduce the following exhibits into the record of this hearing. B one is a copy of the ordinance. B two is a review letter from the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee dated January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, finding the proposed ordinance to be consistent with the Phoenixville Regional Comprehensive Plan. Exhibit B three, review letter from the Chester County Planning Commission dated February fifth, twenty twenty-five, supporting the adoption of the ordinance. Exhibit B four, action memo from the Phoenixville Borough Planning Commission dated February twentieth, twenty twenty-five, unanimously recommending adoption of the ordinance. Exhibit B five, a copy of the public notice for the consideration of the ordinance. Exhibit B six, proof of publication from the Pottstown Mercury for the two advertised dates, which is not yet in hand, but will be in exhibit upon receipt. Exhibit B seven, letters to the, or from the borough to the Pottstown Mercury and the Chester County Law Library dated February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, providing copies of the ordinance for public inspection. To give a bit more background on what this ordinance amendment does to the traffic impact study section of the subdivision and land development ordinance. We, in addition to making sure that multimodal transportation was clearly a part of any transportation impact study, we added clarification language to ensure that there was not any ambiguity in the language of the ordinance. We want to make sure that it is clear what we expect from developers when they are required to submit a traffic impact study. And in subsection B, we provided the traf, the borough traffic engineer more power to request additional information and analysis based on site-specific conditions. And this includes further evaluation of non-vehicular travel. With that, does council have any questions or comments regarding this proposed ordinance amendment? All right, seeing none. Open up the hearing to members of the public if they have any public comment on this proposed ordinance amendment. If you do have public comment, please state your name and your address and state your public comment on this ordinance amendment. Seeing none in person, is there anyone on Zoom?
Mr. Denlinger, I have no hands raised.
All right, with that, I will close the public comment period and I would entertain a motion to close our hearing and resume our public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, we are back in our public meeting and I would now entertain a motion on the proposed amendment to section twenty-two dash six hundred of the subdivision and land development ordinance.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance amendment to chapter twenty-two subdivision and land development, part six, impact statement.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Ordinance is adopted, six zero.
Back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you. With that, that takes us to section eleven of tonight's agenda. We have resolutions and ordinances to consider. There's A through I tonight. First on the docket for us tonight is a motion to adopt an ordinance providing for the vacation abandonment of the abutting property to the abutting property owners, the entirety of the unopened portions of Emmett Street and Wilson Street. What is council's pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the item or?
I can give some background on this.
Give us an overview.
There are unopened portions of Wilson Street and Emmett Street, west of Taylor Street, which have remained unopened. As you know, you authorize advertisement of the ordinance proposing to vacate these portions of Emmett and Wilson at your November twenty twenty-four regular meeting. On January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, direct mailing notice of the proposed ordinance was mailed to the abutting property owners. The proposed ordinance was also advertised in the Pottstown Mercury twice in successive weeks, on January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five and February seventh, twenty twenty-five. Each of these notices identify that interested parties could request a hearing by petition submitted to the borough within ten days after the second advertisement. We received no timely petitions for a hearing and therefore we are able to move forward with consideration of this ordinance in typical manner. This ordinance was also shared with the Pottstown Mercury and Chester County Law Library for public inspection on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. And I will add, by vacating these paper streets, the half-wits will revert to the abutting property owners, but it is up to the abutting property owners to establish their property boundaries and file the documents necessary to incorporate the applicable portions of the abandoned streets to their properties.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions by council? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next up, we have an amendment to chapter two, animals. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance amendment to chapter two, animal.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Carmenito. Questions on?
I'm going to quickly say for this ordinance and the next two ordinances, it was, they were advertised in the Pottstown Mercury on March third, twenty twenty-five and they were provided to the Chester County Law Library and Pottstown Mercury for public inspection on February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oh, Mr., sorry.
If I may, I just want to point out, I believe our previous ordinance said that animals, dogs must be under control, whereas this ordinance says that it is, it is off the premises of its owner that a leash is required, tether, chain, rope or similar device that can't exceed six feet in length. So this strengthens the language. As I said before, it said must be under control of the owner. This says if it's off the premises, it's got to be essentially on a leash.
Removes ambiguity. It removes ambiguity.
Yes.
So. Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Similarly, we have an amendment to chapter fifteen, motor vehicles and traffic.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt an ordinance amendment to chapter fifteen, motor vehicles and traffic.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on tonight's update to chapter fifteen? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And next up, we have an amendment to chapter sixteen, parks and rec.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance amendment to chapter sixteen, parks and rec.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. For item E tonight, last month, we had considered this as a, as an item. There was much discussion. Council has advised us that in order to properly move forward with this, a resolution is required. Seeing with the attendance that we have tonight, I don't want to be inadvertently tipping the scales and creating a closer contest. So I would like to table this item to next month when we are at full complement. Just knowing how the item was voted last month, I don't think it'd be fair to move forward.
Do we need a motion to table that?
Yes.
I make a motion that we table. Item.
Eleven E.
Thank you, eleven E.
Second.
There's no, so we have a motion and a second. There's no discussion on tabling. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Thank you for your consideration on that. Next up for item F, we have a resolution authorizing the submission of flood mitigation program grant to the CFA.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on this grant application? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item G, and tonight, we have a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Chester County Department of Community Development, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, community revitalization program grant application for the installation of solar array on the fire station and rec center.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Berkeley.
We would, I'll just offer that, I think this is a great idea. I hope we can get this funded. As we are almost, have we flipped the switch upstairs?
The lights are on upstairs.
Okay.
Yep, cool. No, I thought. I'll let Mr. Crack.
A minute.
Okay, two, two things. They're not on upstairs because our friends at Pico can't figure out panels versus meters and we got one for one phase and a meter for three phase. Now we have a panel that we have to reinstall as three phase and they'll come back and put the meter on at some point down the road. But I would like to clarify, we got our proposals in, within the last day with regard to this item. We're only going to be applying for the recreation center. And the reason for that is the, the transfer switches and things of the type to the generator at the fire station creates a different issue that we have to resolve and it's going to cost a little bit more to do that. The grants are due next week and so we, we know we got enough to do this. As a matter of comparison, the Public Works Building is a forty-nine KBW solar array. This up here is twenty-seven. We are going to be able to put on top of recreation center a three hundred and seventy-five KB. So that's a, it may offer us the opportunity to transfer any excesses to another borough account. And so we're, we're, we're really looking at that. Right? So, but this, your motion tonight would not include if, if you need to take that out, the fire station.
Mr. Crack, unless you're opposed, I, I believe the motion and I pulled up the resolution to double check. It authorizes the submission of the grant for both the fire station and recreation center, but it does not, does not direct you to submit the grant for both. So I believe the
Fair enough.
The current motion is acceptable.
What you said. It supports but doesn't obligate. Got it. Any other questions, Mr. Kirchner?
If I may add, this is a grant for five hundred fifty thousand dollars and I always like to ask, is there a borough match on this?
Yes, there is. The total cost is seven hundred and fifty thousand. So our match, the required match is twenty-five percent. At that number, it's twenty-six percent.
I think it will pay itself off.
Yes.
In short order.
Any other questions on the motion for the grant application? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries as stated. Next up, we have a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Chester County Department of Community Development, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, community revitalization program grant application for the Fillmore Street Alignment Project.
So moved.
Second, motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirchner. Any background required or?
Sure. This project's probably, I'm going to say twenty eighteen timeframe. It's been something long in the making. It's, we actually have put together a design that is three phases. Then the, there's a phase that is Crombie towards Franklin. There's a phase right there at Franklin and then there's a phase between South Street and Franklin. This particular grant application is going to cover the area between South Street and Franklin. And again, this, the plans are, the plans are what they are, but there is still a lot of work to do. We have to deal with some right-of-way issues that we have to work our way through, no, no different than what we're doing right now with Bridge and Star Street. We've gotten all of the funding over the number of years, but we're still working out right-of-way between two entities. That's a typical, same thing with Paradise Street. We had to work our way through some right-of-way and easement issues. That's always the nature of these things, but the grant application is due next week. So we're making a grant application to get ourselves into the queue because they only come around every two years. There is still some work to do and in answer to a question at the podium tonight, I will be putting together a meeting with our engineer and the resident to discuss it further.
Very good.
Mr. Kirchner? I do have a question. I. I, I think the Borough Manager said that this is for South Street to Franklin. But on the resolution, unless I misheard, the resolution says South Street to Crombie Road. So I just want to.
It is. It's South Street to Crombie. It's a one, one point six million dollar project. We put in an LSA grant in November for nine hundred thousand dollars to try to get part of this covered. We're looking at six hundred thousand for here. I guess your next question would be what the borough match would be.
Twenty five percent.
Yeah, it's twenty five percent. However, if we were to get the nine hundred thousand and the six hundred thousand, our match would be around a hundred and ten thousand total project. So that's what we're hoping for, to use LSA money as well as, which is local state account, local share account, which is state funded money with county money, so we can dwindle down the the boroughs match necessary for the project. But it is, it is a project that goes to Crombie. This, this quote is to Crombie Road.
So we would be doing our first phase after we get through all the funding cycles. Our first phase, I believe the Borough Manager said would be south Franklin, but ultimately we're funding all the way to Crombie.
We're trying to find the funding for the entire thing. Some of it won't hit the threshold of trying to find grant funding, so that's why we pushed it together in this way to try to find.
If I may, these, these grants are due like tomorrow or?
The twentieth.
Plenty of time.
It's tomorrow when you have a month we need.
Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. And lastly, under resolutions and ordinances, we have a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of state or federal no match requirement grants for the police department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. This is an item that Chief Marshall had brought to our attention. A number of the grant granting agencies that are specific to the police department are on a short turnaround for whatever reason. And a number of them have zero match, so I thought this was a sound idea to try to make sure that we don't miss deadlines on applications that are sound. Additionally, Chief Chief Marshall has done a great job of always reaching out to make sure that the grant is relevant or appropriate for the desires of council and the community, so that will continue through the language that that's in the resolution, so it seemed like a good step forward to try to make it easier to apply for money.
And I would just add that we are not bound to accept any awarded grant until it comes before council.
Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Without moving to section twelve of tonight's agenda with reports out of committees, boards, and commissions, since Miss Dugan is not here, there were no other items on the Harb agenda that didn't get through on the consent agenda. There will be other items in next month's agenda, it sounds. So planning commission, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to adopt.
Before we do that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's right.
Um.
Opening it.
So I, I see the applicants counsel here as well as the applicant's engineer. I will give a quick background on this application and then I'll turn it over to them. So this application concerns a parcel of land located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Nut Road and Kimberton Road with an address of two hundred Kimberton Road, consisting of approximately eleven thousand square feet and more particularly identified as Chester County UPI number fifteen dash seven dash two. It is currently improved with the former and now vacant Rite Aid building. The applicant proposes to renovate the existing Rite Aid building into a full service drive through car wash with stacking for seventeen vehicles, fourteen parking spaces, and exterior vacuums. The applicant has requested two waivers. The first is to allow a driveway of sixty three feet in width, which is its existing width at the street line in the sole event that Pendot does not approve the proposed median in the right of way. And from sections twenty two dash four nineteen two B and twenty two dash four nineteen three A to allow for a sidewalk five feet in width along Kimberton and Nut Roads. At after reviewing the project at several meetings, the planning commission unanimously voted at its February thirteenth, twenty twenty five meeting to conditionally recommend approval of the application. So with that, Mr. Kearney, I'll turn it over to you.
Bertadec Kearney from Hamburg. Ruben here on behalf of the applicant and Kestra Kelly from BL Companies is the engineer on the project. We do have others in the audience if you have questions of them. As Mr. Dengler had indicated, we had gone to the zoning hearing board, got special exception relief. We had gone to Schuylkill Township towards a portion of the property where no development is going on is located in Schuylkill Township. They deferred to the borough. We are to keep them up to, up to date on what is going on. As Mr. Denglinger indicated, we're asking for two waivers and we did review the proposed resolution and are in agreement with with the conditions outlined by Mr. Denglinger in that resolution. I didn't know if the board had specific questions that they wanted to ask that we may be able to answer.
I'm sorry. No questions from council? I don't know if we have the ability to pull up the plan on the, okay.
Any questions while we wait for the rendering to appear?
If I, if I may, Mr. President, I believe the Chester County Planning Commission made a note in its review about runoff of water from the car wash. And I, I just wanted to ask, I guess, what happens with the water in the car wash?
I can let Kestra answer that.
Yeah, I can, I can. That's a very general question, but I can try to answer it. So anything that is involved with the car wash operations itself, putting any runoff with the car is all contained within the car wash itself. The, the site has what we call like different tunnels. There's wet tunnel and then two dry tunnels. The grades are so that the water kind of pitches back into the building and collected into the system. Anything within the building gets, goes through the several levels of treatment, including the reclaimed tanks, sediment tanks, and oil water separator before it's discharged out of the sanitary sewer. On site for just like typical runoff is there are the required stormwater management BMPs.
So you, you said the grade on the lot makes it so that the water flows back into the.
Immediately in and outside of the tunnel. Yes. So not overall the entire site, but anything. So for example, if the car is coming out of the wet tunnel and it's wet and it drips a little bit, that water is going to pitch back into the building, into the drains of the building.
Thank you.
I, for the sake of conversation, so we cover some of these topics that I know are, are of public interest. We, in planning commission, there's a lot of discussion about the turn in from Nut Road and how it will be metered if queuing occurs. Would you speak to that just a moment? I know that the mast arm proposal is under consideration per Pendot and that a suitable backup plan, I'm sure can be developed.
So.
But if you want to just speak about how that, how we'll manage queuing so we don't queue on to Nut.
Absolutely. That was a concern of planning commission was that if there was ever an issue with stacking or queuing of the cars backing up, that it not be allowed to back up onto Nut Road. We did study several existing car washes of the same configuration with the one, one wet tunnel, two dry tunnels, and we feel confident that there's adequate stacking on site to prevent that from happening. But kind of as a belt and suspender approach, we've also agreed pending approval through Pendot because Nut Road is a Pendot approval that we will install a gate. It, the preference of planning commission and the borough engineer was a swing gate. So that's what we're going to go in with to Pendot, which would have the ability to close that entrance just the right in in the event that for some reason, traffic would be caused to stop on Nut. So it'd be a swing gate. Under normal operating procedures, it would always remain open. We would just have the ability to close it if needed. If something happened with the car wash, it would have some type of reflective signage that said entrance closed, you know, please proceed. Again, this would not be anticipated to be any kind of normal operating procedure, but just in a what if scenario.
And Krista, just to clarify, the the entrance is only off of Nut Road on, on to the facility, right? We do not.
There's two entrances.
Oh, we do enter. Okay, I couldn't recall. You can enter and get into the car wash queue from the Nut Road.
Yeah, this is a, this is probably not the best plan. If there's a site plan, you could go to a couple sheets down.
So both Kimberton Road and Nut Road have full entrance and exit.
Currently, the Kimberton entrance is full access. Nut Road is right in, right out only. We are ma, we're proposing to maintain the same entrance locations, the same circulation. We are proposing to install a a pork chop or like a little concrete median within the, the Kimberton Road entrance, which would be again, subject to Pendot, but that would act for helping control traffic as well as like a safe haven for pedestrians because it's a lot, long crossing. So cars do have the ability to come in. I think the, the, the concern was mainly not due to the proximity of where that entrance is into where the pay stations are. The first thing you're going to do when you come on site is you're going to pay for your car wash, so you're going to go to the pay stations. The Kimberton entrance has a much longer onsite queue, so that wasn't as big of a concern.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if you could just walk us through the screening, the landscape screening along Kimberton and Nut Road.
Sure. Do you have the renderings that you can share? I always like the pretty pictures. But so as a condition of the special exception, you know, we, we we needed to screen all of the equipment on site. So we've worked closely with the planner to go through this. We have different screenings on both Nut and Kimberton. This is a, you know, street line view from the intersection. And then this is along Kimberton. So we have screening at various heights, some specifically at the location of where the, what we call the vacuum booms, which is the post that holds the vacuum is. Additionally, we are using utilizing some of the red awnings that you see as additional screening. And we went through several iterations and I think it's a very robust landscape plan, and I think it will ultimately look very nice at this intersection.
And then from a technical standpoint on the actual car wash, I know there's different levels of certification on sustainability or reclaiming or recycling. Is there any standards that are being met on this system or if you could just explain the system a little bit beyond the recapture?
In terms of like water usage, there is recycled reclaimed water on site, so the technology is ever improving, but you know, on average, it's sixty percent recycled. In fact, reality is probably a little bit better than that, but that's kind of what we like to claim. So the site does recycle the water. I know that there had been some concerns about, you know, what is leaving the site. We do have some experts here. If you guys want to talk chemistry and everything, you can learn a lot. But I think that the big takeaway is there's a lot of levels in place of what this water goes through before it leaves the site, before it enters into the wastewater treatment plant. None of the onsite operations within the car wash itself is discharged to any of the storm sewer system. It's all gone to the wastewater treatment plant. There's various levels of treatment, settlement, oil water separator. And then in general, the detergents that are used in the operation really break down into simpler typical chemical compounds so that in reality, it's not like you use a gallon of detergent. It's not a gallon of detergent that leaves the site. It is broken down and used in that, and that's a condition in the resolution that we will help establish those rates. But I think that's just an important takeaway to understand. And we have representatives if you want to dig deeper. And then I'll just mention one other thing is, you know, I have been speaking obviously with the different borough staff and I spoke with Brian Watson and one of the biggest concerns was what happens if there's a spill, right? With these chemicals, so normal operating procedures. There is a spill prevention plan. All of the employees will be trained on it. There is mechanisms in place. It's important to know that there's not large amount of these detergents on site. They're stored in five gallon buckets. They're not these big drums that, you know, you perhaps may be having in your head. But there is, we have onsite systems in place, so if something does spill, it won't just go down the drain, right? The result isn't going to just be like, well, let's just wash it down the drain and it'll go away. It will be prevented from going down the drain. There's different things for cleanup notification. And we'll provide that plan in writing for borough staff's review.
One other question, but I, I've learned a lot, I think, about commercial car washes here this evening, so I appreciate the, the knowledge. When do you think this will be up and running?
Well, if it was up to flagship, you know, tomorrow, but we are been pretty aggressively in permitting this. I know that they would like to be inter construction this year.
And then lastly for me, a number of employees you're expecting in hours of operation that you're expecting.
So hours of operation was limited during special exception, I think, to eight, eight, eight to eight. And for a number of employees, I think it's yeah, fourteen employees. So as I mentioned, there is a wet tunnel and then two dry tunnels. The dry tunnels are more like detailed tunnels where you actually get out of your car and employees will, you know, clean out the inside.
I would just add, I did speak about some of the issues Kestra's talking about with Brian Watson and put together the conditions in our resolution based on my conversation with Mr. Watson.
I'd like to also note, just from a minor sustainability issue, they are reusing the, the Rite Aid building, so it's not knocking the thing down and putting up new building. It's taking the shell of that building and then putting the, the the car wash equipment into it, so that's a little bit of a re, reuse.
Any other questions from council? All right, with that, I would open it up to public participation. Are there any members here in the audience who would like to comment or discuss this application? I will take that as a no in, in person. Anybody online who would like to discuss this application?
Mr. Dengler, there's no hands raised.
All right, with that, I will close the public participation period and entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution officially conditionally approving the preliminary final subdivision land development plan for the development known as Spotless Car Wash Phoenixville located at two hundred Kimberton Road, subject to the terms and conditions established in the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morse, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion of approval?
Do we need to do the waivers at the same time?
Subsumed as part of the resolution.
The waivers are in the resolution, yes.
It's a long resolution. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? She carries six zero.
Thank you very much.
Under item C, we have Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee with Mr. Kirchner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not much going on, but we are having a meeting of the Trail Subcommittee of the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee. It looks like it's going to be next Tuesday in Schuylkill Township in person. And I also, and what we're trying to do is sort of communicate amongst ourselves, as Linda Richmond would say, about plans in the various municipalities for, for trails, so just to make sure we're syncing up. And I do want to add that Amanda Irwin. And I do want to add that Amanda Irwin, who is the Planning Commission, Phoenixville Planning Commission rep on the Regional Planning Committee, has stepped forward to also serve as a representative on the Trail Subcommittee. So now Phoenixville has two. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkner. Uh, Ms. Dugan's not able to be here tonight, but for Rec Board, uh, there are a number of items on tonight's, or uh, on the website. All of the agenda, all the upcoming camps, classes, and uh everything's listed on the website. Um, and she'll be back next month for further updates. We'll move on to Tree Advisory Commission with Mr. Cármenito.
Yes, Mr. President, trees met on March third. Uh, we discussed a number of topics. Uh, we are continuing to um prune some of our newly planted trees with volunteers. So you might have seen them out in the last uh two weekends. So thank you for those who volunteered. Um, we're continuing our spli- uh planning for our spring planting and um, tonight we approved our twenty twenty-five tree removal list, which that list should be up on the website soon. So moving forward, our next meeting is April, it's beginning of April, first Monday in April. Thank you.
Mr. Borough Manager on tree management, um, I saw the note, separate notice that Pico will be sending their I hate to talk about that company, but they will be doing people will has has their contractor coming through the borough clearing out uh dangerous trees. Do we coordinate that at all? I mean, do do that impact our borough trees? Because I know that sometimes they are, can be quite ruthless in their pruning and have been known to kill trees. But I wonder if there's any kind of way we can interact with them, or whether we just kind of have to grin and take it.
Mr. Watson and and folks on staff have been meeting regularly with the day and the representatives from Asflunt. Um, there's some confusion because they're throughout the borough, uh, and it's a different company as opposed to our company. Uh, so folks see Asflunt in their location, they're automatically assuming they're taking down our trees, and that's not the case. We have uh for years uh offered that if they will just take the tree down, we'll do the stump grinding. We haven't quite gotten there yet, uh, but we're still uh trying to keep that dialogue open.
Thank that's a good point, though. Just because they're, the Asflunt is there, that's not us necessarily.
I do appreciate the tree tenders. They did a nice job, uh, along Star Street this past weekend, and uh they do some really nice work. So appreciate the work that they do. Next up with uh Ms. Berkeley with Human Relations Commission.
Yes, uh, we are still continuing to work through the scorecard and uh communicate with the state uh as they go through changes. Our next meeting is the first Wednesday of April, so that'll be April second. That's at the Rec Center at six P M. It's a public meeting if anyone wants to join and find out more about that. Um, I also want to give a shout out to the commission um in neighboring municipality. West Vincent had a lot of question and they were actually looking to repeal potentially their um anti-discrimination ordinance and looking at um uh making their commission, you know, at like kind of out outdating it. And our commission went and spoke to, you know, the importance of it and the things that we've done for our community. Um, we were able to actually help support their commission. So I was really proud of the work that our commission did to help a neighboring municipality.
We'll move on into Council action referred to from committees, so personnel and public safety.
Uh, I don't have any updates, but I did want to thank the Civil Service Commission and everyone that was part of the hiring. We obviously got to swear in three new firefighters and then also um make a motion to give conditional offers to two new officers. So very exciting. Um, and thank you for everyone who has participated in the hiring process.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, Parks and Recreation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we already adopted most of the uh quite a large slate of the uh temporary community event applications in the consent agreement, including one new event. Um, I just wanted to mention to people um, the Healthcare Access uh twenty-fifth, not not the twenty-fifth anniversary, the Open Hearth Fundraiser, seven oh one South Main Street on May twenty-first, it's gonna be a Wednesday night uh kind of a street party or block party. So it's kind of really interesting. It's up there. Uh, we're open to hear this. It's a good organization and they'll be doing something neat. Uh, we do have one uh item that was not on the consent agenda, so I'd like to make a motion to approve a temporary community event application for the annual Dogwood Festival from May fourteenth through May seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, six P M to ten P M, Wednesday through Friday, and eleven A M to ten P M Saturday. Streets should be closed at Second and Third Avenue between Main and Star Streets throughout the event. For the Dogwood Parade, Bridge Street between Mark Church Street and Main Street with a rolling closure and Main Street from Bridge Street to Fifth Avenue at uh from ten P M to two P M on Saturday, May seventeenth for the annual Dogwood Parade. And conditioned upon receipt of valid certificate of insurance, naming borough as additional insured. Second.
A motion and a second, questions on the item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero one. Anything else tonight, Mr. Moore?
Uh, no, our uh we're having our next scheduled meeting uh next week.
Great. Moving on to Policy Committee with Mr. Cármenito.
Yes, Mr. President. First item under their uh policy agenda is a motion to schedule. I'd like to make a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance amendment to Chapter eleven Housing. Second.
A motion and a second, questions on this item? Schedule and advertise, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Cármenito.
And next item on the agenda is, uh, I'd like to make a motion to schedule and advertise an amendment to Chapter thirteen Licenses Permiss General Business Regulations, Part Five. Second.
A motion and a second, questions on this item?
Yeah, could we have a little bit of an explanation of where this came from? I've read it through in detail. I'm trying to understand why it's being offered.
We have a section uh in our ordinance, uh, Part Five that today refers to pool halls and building halls.
Mm-hmm.
A little outdated. But we do have an issue uh operating where have people who are performing in a public way throughout the borough. And there's really no teeth for us to uh keep that in check. I have to raise some sound, there's a relation to uh location of the venue. So what this does, uh, it provides us the opportunity to manage.
What you want to do and then uh sorry, uh, tell us what you want to do and then uh uh a permit will be issued to allow you to do that. Uh, and the reason it says public is because we don't, we're not just limiting this to uh Bridge Street or Main Street. It could be in any of the parks. It could be any other location. So it it's a broad brush to try to manage uh things that sometimes occur. Uh, and it's, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, unless you got something else.
Is the the borough incur uh any legal liability if it doesn't do this?
Yes, I mean, there's issues if there's you know, noise complaints or things that are happening that are dangerous and, you know, we have to shut it down. And we don't have regulations that we can rely upon in doing so.
Okay, well, um, I'm actually going to urge council not even move this to schedule and advertise. I don't, I don't think this is quite unnecessary. Uh, I'm opposed to it strongly. It's a, an unnecessary interference in personal expression. People want to pull out some bongos or guitar on Bridge Street or at the uh one of the gazebos in Reeves Park or on the stage of Reeves Park where nobody's using it. Were we saying, I don't know, you gotta get a license and pay a fee and have insurance? I I disagree with that. Um, it's, it's, what have we done with Main Street and with Broad Bridge Street? Particularly with the closures. There was a band that's just showed up, a bunch of guys with horns and get and drums and and a tuba, and a little people love it. If we'd had this thing in place, we'd have had somebody come over and tell them to knock it off. Um, that, that's, that's contrary to the spirit we've been trying to encourage down there. And we've got these great parks. We've got Hartwood Park. Got a space there. We've got the the children's stage. They're, they're created to just create a framework, and now we're going to license and manage it? Um, that's, that's just, I I don't think that's right. There's a young, there's a, some middle school age kid likes to jam on the guitar on Bridge Street on some Friday nights. And we're going to tell them, oh, no, you gotta go get a license. You gotta go pay a fee. And you, and like pages of supervision and coordinator reviewing the appropriateness from some broad set of rules. Um, I realize we're not interfering with the, their First Amendment rights, but uh, and we would have to like put up signs enforcing and charging someone with enforcing the ordinance and like, I guess the cops coming over and said, well, can I see your permit if somebody just came in and started doing it? I don't think we should even schedule and advertise this. I I think we should, I think we should just um, I I appreciate all the the time and effort and the support that the staff puts into making a great space for us in in all of our parks and public spaces. And and I realize it desire to like, we do have a noise ordinance. I see some things about, you know, keeping people away from the front doors of things, but this this just runs contrary to what all the great work we've done to kind of make it a really, particularly Bridge Street during the, during the downtown closure months. But even, you know, Hartwood Park anytime, um, you know, what if people are playing uh disc golf? And they bring a guitar or two just to hang out in front of the gazebo while they're having an afternoon? We're going to say, oh, no, we have an, we have an ordinance. I recommend that we not schedule an advertise. I'll, I'll be, I'll be glad to take up the same same line of argument. If it, if we do go ahead and schedule and advertise, but I'd like to kill it right now. I don't see any benefit to this.
I would say spending the last several months with Policy Committee discussing this item, there are specific instances that it's the utilization of the tool would have been nice to have the ability to do so. So you said could walk up and ask for in, you know, enforcement action, and that's, that's it. They could. Right now they can't. So right now we have no enforcement where it would be nice to have the option for enforcement. And two of us are great at eight o'clock, but two of us later than that, not so great. So there are specific instances that I I think having the ability to provide some regulation is to the benefit of the overall family nature of the the downtown closure. So that's my sense. Ms. Berkeley.
Yeah, I I mean, I I'm not on policy, but I did know of this. I know the work that was going into it, and I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Moore, because every piece of me wants to fall right in that, in line with that, but I also know from being the representative of the downtown and knowing the challenges and just the blatant disrespect that our officers got when they would just simply said, hey, man, this isn't cool. I need you to move along. Or, hey, man, this we've had a few complaints or, hey, man, it's past ten o'clock or whatever it was. And there was just blatant disrespect and disorder. So unfortunately, our Policy Committee did get to the point of having to look at this. Um, I think that knowing and in speaking with the officers about what goes on downtown and during the closures, they're not really looking to like really bust anybody's chops about this, and they want people to be able to do these things. But when it comes down to, hey, we need you to move along and people are blatantly disrespectful, it would have some teeth to be able to say, well, no, actually, we need you to to move on. And we do also, it's like a catch twenty-two. It's beautiful that, you know, the horns ban. I love street beans. Um, and they're very expensive to hire. I've tried to hire them for some of the nonprofit work I do, but they, we ha- we also invest. Phoenixville first invests in music downtown. So to have somebody come and just, you know, mitigate that investment is is tough too. So it's it's really hard. Um, I get what you're saying, but I also understand the need for enforcement.
Uh, Mr. Moore, question for you. Is there, uh, I think, I think the intention of of this is to um, stop things at the extremes and not necessarily what most of us would consider reasonable. Is there additional language that you think could be added to this that would allow it to attend to extreme situations? But not stymie, you know, spontaneous, creative, and what generally would be considered appropriate behavior?
I I've not given any thought to that question. Um, this is only approving schedule and advertising, so I can maybe look at that further. But um, I have a philosophical opposition to this. Uh, this is like, I feel like, I don't know. Sign, sign everywhere, a sign rocking up the scenery breaking my mind.
Uh, I'm sorry, what was that again, Mr. Moore?
You know, I I feel like this is I feel like this is the assistant principal.
Yeah, so my my only ask is, have they ever been able to bring it back to committee to see if it could be worked into a way where it is meeting the needs of what's been articulated, but also um, running in alignment with with your ideals?
I I'm not going to propose sending it back. Um, I'm, I, you've heard my opposition. I think I've, I kind of laid out my concerns and uh we'll see, we'll see what we do. If you, if you guys do approve to go ahead with the schedule and advertise, and we'll go from there.
Ms. Cármenito? There's.
Uh, you can amend your motion if the second or also agrees.
Yes. I I'd like to amend my motion to uh send this item back to Policy Committee to further discuss uh and review the language.
My motion amended second. Are we voting on the whole thing or just the amendment?
Just the amendment.
Uh, all those in favor of the amendments?
May I, may I ask a question on that?
Yes.
Will you be at the Policy Committee to state your case?
Sure.
Okay.
So all those in favor of amending?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five one. Then we have the actual motion, correct? Was that the amended? That was the amended motion.
We we amended the motion, so there is no
Cap.
motion remaining.
Got it. So we're done. Yes. So it goes back to policy. Uh, James will talk about it again.
Yeah, Mr. President, last item uh I have is a, I'd like to make a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance amendment to Chapter fifteen Motor Vehicles. Second.
Motion by Mr. Cármenito, second by Mr. Weiss, our semi-monthly updates to Chapter fifteen. Any questions on this item tonight? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Anything else on policies tonight, James?
That's it. And our next meeting is the twenty-fourth, I believe, and we'll see Mr. Moore there.
Sounds good. Twenty-fifth. Mr. Weiss, we have uh infrastructure, technology, transportation, sustainability.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, no action to report tonight. Our next meeting is one week from tonight on the eighteenth at seven P M. Quite a bit going on at all times, uh, and we love visitors. That's all. Thank you.
Fantastic. And lastly, uh, Finance Committee, uh, Ms. Dugan was not able to be here tonight, but there's no items that were not on the agenda, uh, the consent agenda. So with that, we'll open up the second and final round of public comment. Uh, for any members joining us on the Zoom platform, if you want to go ahead and raise your hand digitally, we will work through members of the um who raised their hands, and then any members of the public who are joining us here in council chambers, if you want to make your way up to the podium, we do ask that you sign into the sign-in sheet and then just state your name and whether you're a resident or business owner here in the borough. Again, while he's signing in, if there's any members online, if you want to raise your hand digitally, to work through the queue.
Hi, I'm Paul Salantano. Um, I'm a borough resident. I just have a question. I just take some notes on that uh solar array. I'm on the right page here. There it is. Um, it's uh the one for the Recreation Center. Did I hear correctly that it's three hundred seventy-five K V or is that K V A or is it even three hundred seventy-five K? So what's the K V A rating on that?
I can get that for you afterwards. And so public comment is typically just uh comments, not questions, but I can certainly get you the uh clarification on that.
That'd be great. Thank you. That'd be great. Thank you.
Seeing no other uh, members of public comment, uh, either online or in person, we'll close the second and final round of public comment. And we'll move into communications and council participation. Any updates, Mr. Carmenito?
I just wanted to clarify, our next Policy Committee meeting will be March 25th, immediately following Finance Committee.
Fantastic.
All right.
Let's check on one answer here, but so it's 375KW. 375KW. The big one.
That was um, if there was an actual follow up question.
We're gonna have to, excuse me, we're gonna have to speak and ask questions after the meeting's over.
Happy to answer questions after. Uh, Mirji, absolutely. Uh, any other communications or council participation? Seeing none, all the staff reports are in the packets for all of our department heads as always for monthly meetings. Our upcoming meetings are listed on the last page of our agenda. And as we've been doing for the last year or so, we do like to announce our employee service anniversaries. Uh, for March, we are celebrating 123 collective years of service, starting with the fabulous Peggy Nemchek, our super finance. Forty-five years for Peggy in finance. Uh, a, a close second place with Chief Brian Marshall uh, in the Police Department at 37 years. Monica has been with us in, as Finance Director for nine years. Officer Anzaldo has been with us for eight years. Officer Karpovich, eight years. Christopher Salamon, our sanitation driver, has been with us for four years. Uh, Richard Martin with three, for three years in water distribution. Uh, Meg Strout, our community, uh, community engagement coordinator has been with us for three years. It seems a lot longer. Uh, Nicholas Shore, our streets utility has been with us for two years. Justin Dame has been our relief operator for wastewater for two years. And Corey Waller is celebrating his first year anniversary. So we do appreciate all the diligent work that all of our staff in all of our departments uh, put uh, to make the borough a great place to live, work and play. With that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We do not need a second.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero.